The time is 1:30 PM on Wednesday, June 15, 2022. We are at the Nevada Business Center, 330 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 400 Las Vegas, Nevada. This is the time and place set for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Nevada Taxi Cab Authority Board for the month of June. You will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You might tell the chairman that I'm on line now.
Oh, great. So, Madam Secretary, would you please reflect on the record that Member Thompson has joined us by telephone and that Member Rodriguez is accused? Are we in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. That will take us to our second agenda item, which is public comment. This time is set aside pursuant to Nevada revised statute for members of the public who wish to address the board on matters within our jurisdiction. Although we may not take action on those items, at this meeting, we'd be happy to hear from any members of the public on subject matters they think we should be brought to our attention. And we'd ask that any member of the public addressing us do so by trying to limit your comments to three minutes. Is there any member present in the room of the public which would like to address us? Seeing none other, is there anybody participating remotely that would like to address us on the public comment? Hearing none, we will close public comment and move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is industry discussion. This agenda item is set for members of the industry who may want to address us about issues or developments that we should be apprised of. And we have Ms.
Hello.
How are you?
Thank you for the record. I'm Kimberly Maxon Rushton with the law firm Cooper Levinson, appearing on behalf of the Livery Operators Association. Chair, I wanted to bring to your attention and to that of the board and to Administrator Armstrong, an issue that has been ongoing relative to the issuance of traffic citations by the city of Las Vegas to the members of the taxi cab industry. It's been an ongoing issue specifically to the area that is southbound on Main in front of the Union Plaza. And what has occurred is the fact that for years, or at least for the last 18 months, the city appears to be using a camera to issue traffic citations. Under Nevada law, by statute, that's illegal, but that is specific to the issuance of traffic citations that fall under NRS 484A. So what the city has started to do is to issue these citations under a city ordinance. However, the citations that they are issuing are being mailed to the taxi companies. And in my opinion, as an attorney, they're not enforceable because they fail to cite the municipal code that's been violated. They just simply state, and I have copies for the board's certification, description of infraction, blocking traffic lane, but no other ordinance. Now, there are ordinance that specifically pertain to obstruction of traffic, parking violations, time limited stance on a public roadway which allows for 15 minutes. And in most instances, that's what's occurring here. So in reality, what's happening is that when the drivers are dropping off passengers at the Union Plaza, because of the limited space there, they oftentimes will stage on Main Street in order to pull into the port of control and drop off the passenger. If the passenger wants to get out of the vehicle, they are authorized to do so, although the taxi drivers will instruct them that they can only load and unload at a taxi stand. And so that's why they're staging there. The alternative, as you could imagine, would be to continue to drive around and incur additional fees for that passenger versus staging and waiting another two to three minutes in order to unload the passenger. But again, because of the fact that there is a strategic camera set there, the city has started issuing these citations, and they're issuing them by mail. And then the notice of infraction, not only does it fail to state which county ordinance or city ordinance is being violated, but it goes on to say that the reason that this is being mailed to the certificated carrier is because of the fact that the vehicle drove away as the officer was preparing the infraction notice, and it could not be placed on the window shield. Every single one of these infractions contains that language. And I would respectfully submit that in discussing this with the carriers, their drivers are stating, no, I was not told I was getting a ticket and then drove off. This is just a plate. This is a camera that records the plate and then issues the citation. And so on behalf of, I would say, the majority of the carriers, we'd like to take this up specifically with the city and address this because, as I noted, one, we think it's not enforceable because of the utilization of the camera and also because on its face, the citation seems to be infirm because it doesn't cite the specific code that's being violated. But we wanted to bring it to your attention because, again, we want the board to be aware of the issues that are happening within the industry and then the steps that are being taken, not to block traffic or to do anything that would otherwise impede traffic, but rather it's a matter of just having the ability to unload passengers in a safe way without having to continue to circle the property until a space opens up. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from what?
I do have a question, and I appreciate your letting us know that you intend to address this directly with the city because it sounds like maybe a more longer term resolution needs to be thought of by them. However, I'm curious about the citation. Do you know if it's written criminally or administratively? Because there's a huge difference in the requirements for an administrative citation, which is issued to the legal registered owner versus the driver of the vehicle on site. And that's what I'm wondering if there.
And then in response to your question, Mr. Decker, specifically this states that it's being issued to the owner of the vehicle, which infers to me that it's an administrative citation. And it's somewhat akin to a parking violation. But when you look at the parking code under the city, that's where it comes in with the 15 minutes. And it says that if you're in a heavily trafficked area and you come to a standstill because you're loading or unloading, there is a 15 minute timeframe there. And I would respectfully submit that that's probably the actions of the cabs are not lasting longer than 15 minutes. But I think that it is an administrative citation and one which I believe that we could work with the city attorneys. And just so you know, I have previously reached out to the city attorney's office, and their response was that the cameras were legal because of the fact that it was, these are municipal violations, municipal code. But it doesn't state on the actual infraction what the violation is.
Mr. Chair, if I may have one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Have any, to your knowledge, have any of the drivers or cab companies contested the citations in a hearing of any kind with the city? And so what was the result?
I'm looking to see. Perhaps Mario, I apologize. To my knowledge, no, sir, I think that they just simply pay these because they don't want to run the risk of them submitting it over to DMV, and then there being issues relative to the registration of the vehicles.
Mario Mokasha Jim, Deluxe Taxi. I was the first one that brought it up to George. And of course, because they pass it down to the drivers to pay, he thought it was just a normal infraction of a ticket with the driver there. But then I took pictures and I showed him. There's a sign here that says, camera fine, camera fine. They have the lines with the white lines. I don't know if you guys have been there. And then past the light, there's another little box with the lines. Well, the cab will come around to get in line, but if that tire is anywhere in that yellow box, that white box, it's a picture. There's a hard box. The driver doesn't know, he just got a ticket, and then he loads and leaves. Or the other scenario is red light, green, green, goes across, the guy opens the door. He can't stop that because, you know, he's complete stop, he jumps out. Well, he's in the box, another ticket. And I've had drivers that, none of them knew they were fined. And when I brought it to the window, it's either pay or it's going to go up in price. So that's as far as I went.
Just one more item, and this is just informational, so it's still for discussion only. There was a law passed in 2021 session, I can't remember the bill number, but non-payment of fines even for criminal violations are no longer portable to the DMV in the sense that.
In the letter, they go up.
Well, that's a city thing. But Mr.
Mr. Chairman, board members, if I may, I think we're still in public comment right now, so we really need to limit any sort of discussion to coming from members of the public.
There's industry discussion, I'm sorry.
This is industry discussion, not public comment.
Oh, my apologies.
Anyway, that bill is out there. So you mentioned that people were not contesting them because they were afraid that they might, of the referral to DMV. That is no longer legal. So while the city may bump the fines up, I.
Yeah, the city will bump the fines. It's in there, it gives you a date code. I have a whole file. I don't know if it's on there, but it says certain date, if you don't pay, it will go up. But none of these drivers know they got the tickets, and then we've got to go to the driver and make them pay. And it's like, for what? You know? And obviously, now I have the pictures all over the break room, and mine kind of stopped. Obviously, other drivers still don't know about it.
No. I don't have any questions. It was answered before I asked. Is this limited to loading and unloading at the Union Plaza?
No. It's whoever's in that box when the light is red for the Fremont people to cross.
Okay.
So the stand is past the box.
So it's not just a problem at one property?
Oh, that's the only one I know.
But it is on Main Street.
On Main Street.
Between the two.
Yeah, so it's a crossing between the Plaza Fremont and Main Street.
Any other question? Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other members of the industry that want to bring to our attention additional issues? Is there any member of the industry with us remotely that wants to address this? Hearing none, that'll close Agenda Item Number Three and takes us to Agenda Item Number Four, Staff Reports.
If you go to the section dealing with May 2022 statistics, one of the things that I noticed when we reviewed the statistics was that we're on upswing as it comes to revenue, you know, the rise and things of that nature. So it seems that there is some level of recovery that we're having relative to the industry. Also, the citations that we're issuing, they seem to be being held in most cases in terms of what we're having. And we get a total of 24 unauthorized vehicle citations and impounds this month, which was up a lot. And we got a lot of that at the Electric Daisy concert in terms of that situation. So I believe that what the industry is doing well and the authority is doing well in terms of exercising enforcement responsibilities and as such, I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing. Ruben, do you have anything else?
For the record, Ruben, if you know, Chief Investigator with the Taxi Cab Authority, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I just want to just dovetail on that in regard to our enforcement activities specifically at Electric Daisy Concert in the last 30 days. So 22 vehicles were impounded, and it ran the gamut as far as categories or the Craigslist type of things that they were offering, Electric Daisy rides. There was also ones that were actually taken at Electric Daisy involving off-app type of rides, as well as there was at least a couple of carriers that were from another state, specifically Utah and California. So 22 of those vehicles were taken in that three day span. So we're extremely busy, courts were extremely busy, staff did a yeoman's job in getting all those reports done, and the court personnel in processing all those 22 cases, along with, obviously, the Attorney General's Office. For the month, we finished off with 24. We had to pick off a couple more towards the end of May, but we ended up with 24. We're on a path where we're trying to beat what we had last year, whether that means anything. But, you know, the staff is very enthusiastic, they're getting good training, and they're feeling confident about their abilities. So we look forward to the summer months and obviously, as conventions come in, obviously, NFL draft, or the NFL is coming in the fall, we'll be busy for the rodeo. But for right now, we're conducting uniform deterrence enforcement as well as continuing our UPT unlawful passenger transportation activities. And just as a note, we're planning on trips out to Mesquite, Nevada, which is part of our jurisdiction here in Clark County, as well as Laughlin, Nevada, Clark County, Nevada. So we'll be doing some operations out there as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a number of questions, but is there any other alternative currently in Mesquite, though? Is there any certificated carrier providing service to Mesquite at this point?
So, yeah, yes, there's activity out there. We typically partner up usually with Mesquite Police Department. We check in with them once in a while just to make sure that there's, if there's any UPT type of activities.
No, but I mean, is there a licensed taxi company providing service to the citizens of Mesquite currently? The reason I ask is if you go out there and you cite UPTs and the residents can't get a ride because there's no certificate carrier, we're kind of putting Mesquite in a bind at that point.
No. And thank you for the question. So there's operators out there at the various properties there, call it a border town. So you have the Virgin River.
Okay.
You have Casablanca. So those, the last time I went through there, just recently, there were cabs in service running through there.
Okay.
As well as Laughlin is picking up. Just to let you know, one of the main complaints out there in Laughlin is the, again, this is an allegation that's been going on for years as far as Bullhead City type of companies, you know, poaching business on the loss or the Nevada side. So we've got to be very careful with that and the fact that that is typically an interstate ride where a Bullhead City taxi cab driver may pick up, let's say, an employee from one of the hotels and brings them back to Bullhead City where they reside or on the Arizona where they reside. So obviously, that's an interstate type of transportation, which we don't have any authority over, typically interstate. So those are the things that we touch base on with Metro out there, as well as a lot of, we talked to a lot of the cab drivers, as well as the hotel casinos that are operating there at the Laughlin Strip. So.
Oh, yeah, one other thing. We're in the process of hiring two additional underfield for investigator officers at Level One, and we're going to send them to the post academy in terms of dealing with that so we can train them the way we want them trained. We also have two open positions, one for a compliance officer, three, and we have a position for a supervisory compliance officer. Those are presently in requisition, and we are in the process of getting candidates for positions, as well as dispatcher three candidate that we're also looking for. So we are growing in terms of trying to get positions back and getting back to where we need to be in terms of possibly working toward possibly 24/7 service.
I have more questions back to the, back to operations. And Mr. Minister, this will be for you unless you defer to Chief Investigator. Was there, did you find that there was an improved response to EDC this year by the companies from last year? Last year, there were lines that lasted sometimes four hours, people trying to find rides back from the Speedway.
I think this is always going to be a continuing problem in terms of getting people to go out to the Speedway, partly because of the Act 15 corridor, the problem with getting traffic to and from and congestion there, too. There's always a question as to whether people can make money in terms of going out to the Speedway, doing their ride, the deadhead that comes back from the Speedway, those kind of things. It is a continuing issue and issue that we are aware of and we're working toward trying to solve that issue with the operators in the Clark County area.
Okay, so the reason I ask is because I would ask the operators to solve that issue. There's 180,000 people that need rides back and forth every day for three or four days, and it looks very bad when they can't find a taxi in Las Vegas. I know, I know there's a issue with motivating, you know, financially incentivizing drivers to get to the Speedway, but something needs to be done. There's 180,000 people, and it's disingenuous to use that as an opportunity to cite UPT drivers when our industry is not providing an alternative. So I got a little bit of issue with the operators on that because we're out there stopping illegal activity, but the permitted driver, permitted companies aren't providing rides. So I don't know how you incentivize the drivers, and I understand that's an issue, but there's 180,000 people that come to visit Vegas in the course of a couple of days, and they all have to use Uber and Lyft because there's no taxi service. And that's been a problem, and it was a very bad problem last year when I was out there with another agency. I was wondering if there had been any improvement, and I guess the answer is no.
And I think, from my point of view, it's a continuing problem, a problem that we have to work in partnership with our, with the industry in terms of trying to resolve that problem. But I think it's a multi-invested problem. One deals with driver pay, one deals with rates and structure, which is something that will be brought to you guys in terms of dealing with, dealing with that issue. But the major problem, I think that there's a structural problem that we have to solve, and I think it's a bigger problem than just taxi cabs going out to EDC. I think it's a problem in general that we're going to have to resolve, but it's a bigger nut than we think it is.
Oh, wow, 180,000 people transported back and forth twice across the Las Vegas Valley is a pretty big problem, I think. But I would say this is not something that just happened once as a one-up. This happens twice a year, every year. And it's just interesting that the industry hasn't figured out how to make some money or incentivize drivers, and if they're not, we have a PR problem, we have a practical operational problem with all of these visitors that are coming to Las Vegas a couple of times a year, not being able to use cabs. And of course, it's 6:00 AM and they've been partying for 24 hours. They don't care if the ride that they have is on the app, on the Uber app or not, they just want a ride. So I would suggest that, I don't know if this is something for the board to solve or, and definitely not for the agency to solve, but I would ask the industry to kind of look at this so it's not constantly a problem.
Tom?
Hi, May. I've had the privilege to serve my good six hours of ride along during EDC, and I can't speak for all the other days, but in the time that I was there, I'd like to share that it was a Saturday going into Sunday morning, which was probably like the height of that EDC. I could see for a fact in the timeframe that we were there, the shift started at 3:00 in the morning for that last pickup at the end of the show, and it was definitely not a four hour wait. I actually have footage of, it's still, I'd like to acknowledge it's still an ongoing issue. The cabs were trickling in, you know, a couple hours at a time, but that could also be partly because of the traffic in general, just trying to get in. It was actually very well organized in the sense that they had the, at least the, the people working for EDC directs people where if it's a taxi, you line up here, and if it's, if it's an Uber or Lyft, it's a different lane. So I was pretty happy about that. There was staff from YCS who would constantly be on the lookout and I guess be on the radio to make sure they're all right. I would say that it's more of at most maybe an hour wait at one point. And then I think that any kind of improvement is better than none, but yeah, it's definitely something that we do want to address because there is also a point in time when limo drivers would come up to the taxi stand and say, hey, you know, do you want to get a ride? And so, you know, the people that are actually originally waiting for a taxi would go over to group limo rides just to get out of there.
I cringe a little bit having the agency out there telling, you know, 100 people waiting in line that this off-app, unlicensed limo that can seat, you know, 10 people, that they can't get in it. It makes the agency look bad. It, of course, it's illegal, and who knows whose car it's, it's not, it's not that I'm saying that the agency should let unlawful rides happen, but from the perspective of the 100 people that are waiting in line, they don't really care, they just want to, they want to get back. And so I really wish industry would look into figuring that out because I think it puts the authority in an awkward position where we are out there enforcing the law in public and preventing people from getting rides. They don't necessarily understand that the difference between UPT and on-app. What is clear is if there's, you know, never more than a couple cabs lined up while there's 100 people waiting for cabs, so. Thank you.
Chief Investigator, do you have any sense of ratio between cab service versus ride share, certified ride share, permitted ride share folks?
Great question.
For the concert?
Yeah, for the concert. Tough one. Obviously, in this particular event, there was, there was a lot of Uber, Lyft drivers that obviously showed up. It's almost difficult to say in some of the things that Administrator Armstrong had said in regard to the traffic and you get a scent, the sense I got was that obviously there was a lot of people taking off, or the application type rides. Cabs were trickling in at a much steadier rate than what myself and Member Decker had experienced last year. There was, I could say that there was a good trickling in, right? I was encouraged by that. I'm also, I want to make, as Katana had mentioned, honorable mention to the YCS staff. It was staff for three days, as they usually do. And so I believe that without their service out there, it could have gotten a lot worse. We had created a really good relationship with the insomniac EDC people in regard to staffing. And so they came to me that morning and said, hey, whatever you need, take it, you know, and readjust the people as we, as you see fit. And that's what we did for the three days. We also did, as far as enforcement staff, we did what we call public announcements, where we actually made announcements to the people that were standing there in regard to not being overcharged, meaning, because we had some cases where cab drivers, and I'm sorry to say this, but cab drivers were charging passengers off the meter $300 just to arrive back to Vegas. Okay? So there was a lot of enforcement type stuff going on, but to answer your question, the sense I got was that obviously there was more a TNC drivers out there, for sure. What they did physically this year was put more, they moved the limousine and charter buses to our area, which I wasn't happy with, but there, it was a spacing, physical spacing problem. So we had to, we got to see that firsthand, how many of these limo drivers showed up, how many of these buses showed up, type of transportation. So we're all together. So that made for a little bit of a mess, but thank goodness for YCS and some enforcement people, we were able to navigate those taxis there to that location. But yes, truthfully, there needs to be a lot of work, as Member Decker has pointed out in regard to in terms of the industry getting more drivers out there because it is, those passengers, I asked them, why, why are you taking, why are you standing in this taxi cab stand line? Why are you standing here? Why are you going to wait one hour? Because I know that they're, they're on the meter and they're not, and they kind of just pointed out there in a parking lot. So that's why, the reason why those people were there was because they knew that they were going to pay what was on the meter.
Backing out EDC numbers, would you say that the UPC trend in the marketplace is worse or better than last year? So last year was, you know, post-COVID, it was really bad. You think it's going up or down, or what are you guys finding?
I think the trend, I think it's a rising trend in the fact that, well, gasoline, I'm hearing things now, there's some activities going on at the airport. I'm hearing things now, there's some activities going on at the airport in regard to off app rides. And so I think gasoline is going to play a big factor into what's going to happen in the summer months. So and it's also, it's it also relates to how many officers you could put out on a shift. And I believe that it, obviously, if we had more officers, we would probably have more cases. And that's just my guess from doing this for for a while, but I'm seeing these gas prices scaring people into not driving their cars, maybe taking more public or make some sort of transportation other than their own vehicle. So I think that gives these UPT opportunities an ability to to capitalize on what's going on. That's what I feel.
And also, we'll never get to the point of opinion from knowing how many staff we have, get to everyone, because the bottom line is we're talking, even if they're with full set plus segment 18, we're talking 18 versus 17,000 possible cabs that were intended to regulate them, we still have to do our enforcement function as well as doing our UPT function. And what we're trying to do is make it get it to the point in which a person will look to the left, look to the right, or they're deciding. That's the best we can get in terms of putting our finger in the bag and trying to trends all the problem, but I want a person that is deciding to go on this road to make a choice in terms of not knowing whether that person they're picking up is going to be a taxi cab employee or not a taxi cab employee. I think that's the best you can expect from us at this particular point based upon that because I don't think we'll ever have the staff in order to be able to fully police the entire situation.
That's true, but I'm going to recommend again, as I did as formerly occupying your position, that the enforcement staff utilize the NTA and their and their enforcement staff because they are doing similar activities, they're not concentrating on it to the extent you guys are, but they've offered just so you know, they've offered to assist. And then my last question is there's is there still, do we still perceive industry to be suffering from a shortage of drivers?
Yes. That was an easy question.
Do we have, on follow up to that, do we have a sense, are we still around 33, 3400?
About 3400 that are active. I would say of that, actual active cars in the world, probably between 2,200 and 2,500.
And just as far as number of permit, we're permit holders, we're holding steady at that 3,790 mark for this month as well. It's similar, maybe minus two, three from last month, but we're holding steady with And that concludes my enforcement report unless you have any other questions for me.
Other questions? Please. I'm betting a thousand, every time I have a question, it gets answered before I can ask it. So this is my best meeting so far. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you miss figure any other statistical information?
That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more personal question.
Sure.
You you mentioned that you hired two two underfills that you'll be sending through post.
Yes.
Which which commissioners?
I don't know yet.
You don't know?
Since you asked that question, I don't know yet. What I'm going to do is I'm funding the post requirements at the highest level at this particular point for budgeting purposes, and then we'll make the choices to which one it is once we get the individuals on board. We're at the beginning process of those individuals. We have not interviewed anyone yet because we just put the the thing on the street probably the last couple of weeks, so we're working toward it at this particular point, but I want to underfill because we want them trained to be tax cab authority officers as opposed to being officers of other entities.
Well, then I'm happy to throw out to you that DPS Academy is free to the tax cab authority because it's a state agency other than equipment and.
Yeah. And when are you having your next academy?
Well, the DPS Academy, so it's not us, but they have two a year in the South, they have two a year in the North. And then Nevada Post has two a year, and I think the cost is $750 or something.
Anything else?
That's it.
Apologies, I may. The new MA 2 decision?
Oh, that one. We're we hired a new manager analyst, too. That person will head up our audit division, which is something that we've been sorely lacking as at this point, and that person starts on Monday.
Excellent. Great. Mr. Ripper, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
And Mr. Balla, do you have anything for us?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any future agenda items, Minister?
Not at this time. We may bring before you, hopefully when we get through all the regulations as well as the NRS and bill drafts, we'll bring that before you, but as they say, we don't bring anything towards time.
Any suggestions from members of the board for agenda items? Bring none, we'll move to agenda item number five, that is public comment pursuant to Nevada statute this time set aside for members of the public who may want to address us, matters within the jurisdiction of the board. And we have someone who wants to give us public comment and let's.
Yes, sir. Michael Baylen, Yellow Chapter Star, UCAW 1, 2, 3, and 4. First of all, I appreciate the acknowledgement from Katana and Chief Aquino about us being out there, trying to address your concern. I I've been in industry over 30 years now, and there's no doubt we can do a better job. And we always try to have a supervisor out there calling. There are a handful of shows throughout the year, the big shows, that present a problem for us, and this one's really one of our most difficult ones because although we have a supervisor out there sending everyone out, bringing them back, it takes not an hour. And when you got everyone trying to get there at the same time, everyone trying to leave at the same time, the math just doesn't work out. It never will. After 30 years, I don't care when we had a surplus of drivers, big shows, we've never done a good job. Some of it's traffic issues, but to have all these extra drivers just for a few different shows doesn't make sense either. So we do our best, we can certainly do better, and we enjoy working with Chief Aquino, he does a really great job of getting the industry together where we all try to meet and round tables, see how we can provide the best service, but some shows it's just we it's really difficult.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other members of the public in present? Is there anybody with us remotely who would like to address us in public comment? During or seeing none, we'll close public comments and our final item is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion unless there's any other business.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So adjourned. Thank you very much.